Alright, here we go. Going to go and call this meeting to order. This is welcome to the Palmdale City Council Meeting and the successor and Housing Authority. Let's go ahead and get a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bishop.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Loa.
Here.
Council members Olson.
Here.
Bettencourt.
Here.
Alhakan.
Here.
Commissioners Frogasain.
Here.
And Betts.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Alright, thank you. Let's go ahead and move on to a pledge of allegiance followed by a brief moment of silence. Mayor Pro Tem Loa, can you lead us?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Pacing hand over your heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Alright, Madam Clerk, will you please acknowledge the observances for the month of April?
We would like to acknowledge Celebrate Diversity, Child Abuse Prevention Month, Distracted Driving Awareness Month, Fair Housing Month, Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and Earth Day.
Thank you very much. There's a lot of worthy causes, so we thought we'd pay some tribute, recognize all of those causes, so... With that said, we're going to move on to public comments. Actually, before that, City Manager, are there any items to pull from tonight's agenda? Okay. And for those who, we have paying attention, we have our Assistant City Manager Sal Mendez with us tonight. Alright, so... City Clerk, will you please play the public comment code of conduct and read the public participation statement?
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's city council meeting, and the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and council members, and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Alright, thank you very much.
Now is the time for public participation on Sections 5, 6, 8, and Section 12.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
I have Jonathan Duran.
Who's it going?
What do you do today? Again, Jonathan Duran, representative with the Western State Regional Council of Carpenters, just coming to give support for Item 6.6 and 6.8 for both of these projects. Again, for us, it's an opportunity to allow local residents to be able to work here under the CWA that you guys, that the city has agreed to participate in. For these, both of these contractors, infrastructure and then the other project, it's going to allow individuals here locally to be able to find work here, spend tax dollars here, and the best thing about it is, hey, have family, spend time with your family here. So, it gets us off the road, that grind down to LA every single day sometimes gets a little hard, but it's great to see that the City of Palmdale is participating in this, and we look forward to many more projects like this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have Crispin Carrasco.
Good afternoon, Board members. My name is Crispin Carrasco. I'm going to speak on behalf of Item 6.6 and 6.8. So, my name is Crispin Carrasco, and I'm a member of Western State Council of Carpenters. I lead close to these projects, and these future projects, the Western State Council of Carpenters will have a full support. The reason is because the developer has committed to work with responsible contractors. Contractors that we hire, local carpenters, and we hire, we have programs, state programs, the certified apprenticeships and training programs. As a member of the union carpenter, I would like to express my full support for this project, which will benefit local economy and also local hire. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Eugene Hernandez.
I'd like to speak in favor of the motion to have translation services. You have seen Salba and other organizations have come here, maybe 100 people, and it's only right for them to participate fully in the functioning of the city council and letting you know what issues they're concerned about, but it's very haphazard just to have them themselves translate. I think the city has to hire an official translator so that they can fully participate in civic affairs.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Johnny.
Commissioners, council members, good afternoon. My name is Johnny Escobedo. I'm a business agent for Ironworkers Local 416. So, we're here in support of 6.8 and 6.6. We have, in our union, we have approximately 4,500 members, that's just in the reinforcing division. Our specialty is infrastructure. We all know that infrastructure is one of the greatest things that we need in this country, you know, to keep us moving, to keep us transported, to keep us safe. Our apprenticeship program is great. We have approximately 35 members here in the Antelope Valley, just in Palmdale, that travel every day from either here to LA or to Irvine. We're supposed to be sitting here and working to live, not live to work. You know, we're supposed to be able to spend time with our families and enjoy them and take them to baseball practice, or basketball practice, or volleyball practice, or ballet, you know? So, we're here in support of that, so that our members can stay local to their families and continue to make Palmdale what it is and make it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next speaker?
We have Juan Medina.
Alright, sorry about that. I don't speak English, so I need help. So, I'm going to speak, I think, Agenda Number 8 about translating. Okay. Okay, my name is Eduardo. Mi nombre es Eduardo. Buenas tardes a todos.
My name is Eduardo. Good evening, everyone.
Para mí y para mi comunidad latina que residimos en Palmdale es importante este punto.
For me and my community, Hispanic community that lives in Palmdale at this point is important.
Como saben, somos casi el 70% de la población en Palmdale latina?
Like, you know, we are approximately 70% of the population Hispanic in community.
Por lo cual es importante para nosotros como miembros de esta ciudad.
For which it is important for us as members of this community.
Tener la información y saber en qué se está trabajando en nuestra ciudad.
To obtain the information and be aware of what's being done in our community.
Poder opinar y poder votar y poder saber qué es lo que está pasando dentro de nuestra ciudad.
To be able to provide an opinion and to know and be informed about what is taking place in our city.
De manera propia, en mi hogar hay tres votantes, y además de mí, que yo no voto, que son ciudadanos americanos y que no hablan inglés.
In my household, there's three and four members, three of which are, that are citizens, three that vote. I don't vote.
Por lo cual es importante poder proveer información de habla hispana y de habla de inglés.
For which it is important to be able to be provided with information in both English and Spanish.
Todos los miembros de mi hogar pagamos taxes, y con esto queremos saber si se puede proveer el servicio de traducción.
All members in my home pay for taxes, and for that, we would like to make sure that, to know that interpreting services are provided for in this, in this meeting.
Creo que la ciudad cuenta con suficientes recursos como para poder solventar este, este servicio.
I believe the city has enough resources to be able to provide this resource.
Personalmente, yo he visto algunos de los gastos que ha tenido la ciudad, y en algunos podía decir que son excesivos los gastos, entonces creo yo que sí es posible que se pueda también incurrir en este gasto.
Personally, I have seen the cost incurred or expended by the city, and I feel that some have been in excess of things that are not necessary and should be covered for a resource such as this, as I'm requesting.
Muchísimas gracias por su tiempo.
Thank you very much, Rachel.
Mayor, there are no more speaker cards on these sections.
Okay, thank you very much. That is going to move us along to the Housing Authority. Commissioners, would you like to pull any items or refuse? I believe that's...
Yes, for Item 5.1.
Oh, okay.
One of your own, sorry. Yeah, I do not submit cards. Javier Flores, Palmdale resident, I too am standing here to express my support for the proposal to provide language interpretation services at regular city council meetings. I know that you have a provision already which exists that allows for a 72-hour notice and then you provide the service, but that's not enough. In a city with as many bilingual, Spanish-speaking people as we have here, that service should be readily available without having to make the request. You've got to understand, there's a lot of people who might not know this provision, and if they came to a city council meeting without knowing, they would have to do exactly what the young man did just a little while ago and asked Nardi to go ahead. Luckily, he knew Nardi and knew that. She did a very good job, by the way. I want you to know. But that service needs to be provided regularly, on a regular basis, we believe. It would allow for transparency, which, you know, we all claim to be very concerned with. Inclusivity, equal access, participation in government, local government affairs. So, we hope that you provide this service. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that will conclude our public comments. Before my, before the Housing Authority members step off, can I make, maybe get a motion for 5.2, and we're going to pull Item 5.1?
Right, and make a motion to approve 5.2 and 5.3.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Alright, are we going to do a voice vote, or are we going to do in the system?
Start voting.
In the system. Off we go.
The motion will be verbal, and then the voting will be through the system.
Like always. Okay.
Motion passes.
Alright, thank you. So, that's going to take us to 5.1 on the Housing Authority Consent Calendar.
I'm going to make a comment too.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, you mean from down there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
As a member of the public, and then you'll need to step down too?
Yes, you can accuse, and then you can comment if you want, or you can just listen.
So, we have the two Housing Authority members recusing themselves. Um, let me see.
We need to reopen it.
I'll move to reopen the public comment.
Yeah, let's reopen it. We'll start with any public comments. Alright.
Hello. Well, first off, Commissioner Frogasain, I'm a resident of the Boulders at the lake, and I have lived there for 25 years, and I can't say I'm prouder of a community. That's pretty much why I became a Housing Authority Commissioner. It's, I believe, our concerns of the meetings that we had, they're being addressed, and, and I'm in support of the rent increase also.
Okay.
That's about it.
Okay. Anybody else in the public would like to have a chance to speak to the Housing Authority? We're going to go ahead and close public comment discussion for council. Anyone want to, want to start?
Well, I think what we ought to do is make a motion to approve it, which I'll do now.
Okay.
And if there's a second, then we should have any report from staff, and then discussion.
Okay, so we'll start with a motion second, and then we'll follow with discussion and possible action. So, we have a motion for Mayor Pro Tem Loa.
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Bettencourt, Commissioner Bettencourt. So, let's go ahead and enter discussion. Do we want a staff report?
Yeah, could we have Ms. Beunice come up real quick?
One more, one more overview. Thanks, Olivia.
Hi.
Well, there's a couple of things that I think that are significant, and that is that you met with, you met with the residents at these various parks.
Yes, sir.
So, if you could comment on that, and especially anything regarding the position in terms of raising the rents at these different locations.
On Wednesday and Thursday last week, we met with the three Boulders Mobile Home Park residents, and they are all open and in support of the increase, because they do want to maintain their parks in the... And they like how great it is there compared to other parks in the Palmdale area. What we did receive from them was their concerns and their priorities of what they would like to see improved, and in some parks, the ranch one and two, it was the trees, having those trimmed, and it was having more lighting in certain areas. So, we are looking into those, and the management is seeing what's areas they were pointing out that require that. At the lakes, they would like some amenities, such as maybe chairs around, new chairs around the pool, some improvements in the streets, so that we're looking at those improvements. We're putting together the list, and also, let me see. My apologies. The ground cover in the playground, and some mall concerns. So, we're, we're all, we're putting together the list of everything they presented, and we're addressing those.
Did they comment on the effect of an increase of rent? It's $96 a year, I believe.
They did not comment on that.
Okay, that wasn't brought up. I know that we had several residents that were here last meeting when we took this up, and they addressed their concerns in the various parks. And then the fact that if they're here, they're not commenting, so I assume that means that they're...
Everything that was brought up was addressed.
What's that?
Everything that was brought up by the residents that attended the meeting on March 20th have been addressed or in motion to take care of those.
Okay, so those things are actually being done, the various repairs and so on.
And some of them had already been taken care of prior to the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a lot of the same feedback I got from a few of the residents I talked to. They want to make sure that the quality of life remains at the same level it's at, and have some of those smaller issues fixed, like the chairs, the trees, and just some of those kind of cleanup issues and whatnot. And, and also, we still have the grant program, or not the grant, but the subsidy program built into it for the low income, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, it, it should be a fairly smooth transition, and it should be, it should be equitable for all the parks. All this, all the money for each park stays within their own fund?
And in addition, as was requested, we did identify additional funding. So, we do have about $100,000 reserve that we can use for the street sale that needs to be done, and we have CDBG funding that we're proposing, and the action plan for an ADA playground.
Awesome.
So, we are working to address what we were requested to.
Perfect. I know it's just so, it's so sensitive when we have to raise the cost of, of anything, but that's just the nature of today's world. Unfortunately, the price of everything is slowly starting to rise, but as long as we can maintain a quality of life for the residents in these parks, that's, I think that's our number one concern. My question is, I know we're working towards those concerns, but what do we have in place that will hold us accountable to that?
We, 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 on a regular basis, we go through and inspect the park, look at what needs to be done. We have in place that all residents may come to the management on, at any day, in any time of the year, and let us know if there's anything that does need to be addressed, that any concerns they have, any, any wants that they have. There, it is always open to be able to receive those. In addition, there are regular inspections by the state of California to make sure that we are in good order. So, we are, there's more than one level, and staff does go through the park on a regular basis to make sure that it is in good order, to see randomly, without announcement, to make sure that, you know, the weeds are in order, that there's not too much, you know, things being accumulated, that the trees are looking okay. So, we are proactive and have been throughout the years.
How, how long's this management company been with the parks?
Since 1997, I believe, or 2002. Definitely since 2002, when the Housing Authority took on the parks.
Yeah.
They may have been there when Link had them prior to that.
About 20 years. 20 years? There you go. Okay.
So, we have prior to that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you for updating the staff report to reflect some of the safety concerns and the other issues that you've addressed with the tenants, and for circling back with them to just reconnect and make sure that they're clear on the proposed rent increase this year, but also moving forward. Last conversation, last council meeting, we had a pretty lively conversation about deferred maintenance and some of the priorities and the overall budget that we expect to have to put forward in the upcoming fiscal year to account for all of the needs of the, of the three parks. And then you actually, I remember you actually had a list, you had like a spreadsheet you held up.
I did, but we are updating that as a result of having meetings with residents and their priorities that they've presented, which I mentioned a few minutes ago, and with different specific areas that they identified that need attention. So, our management is out, going out, looking at what they've identified and brought to our attention, so that we're updating the list. So, I, it's expanded, and some of the items on that list have already been taken care of.
Do you have, I mean, just sort of a general, we really were kind of looking at an overall umbrella view of what we're, what needs to be done. Do you have a general sense of the overall budgetary impact that it will require for us to take care of everything that, that, that needs to be taken care of in terms of deferred maintenance and capital improvements and such?
Over time, it will be about $600,000. When you, when you keep in mind, and this is ballpark figure, and over the three parks. You keep in mind $100,000 for the, for the street sale. A playground may cost up to $500,000 to put in a new ADA playground, so we've put that into the CDBG budget as, and not the operations budget. We are also looking at retaining walls, adding some rock iron to the top, so people cannot go over the fences for more security. We're painting, we're, we're looking at the furniture that they would like added to the different... They would like some of the green areas to become areas that can be, where they can sit, so we're looking into benches. So, some of the things that they're asking for are not high-cost items, but cumulatively, they are. We just put out requests for bids on fixing the, one of the pools at one of the parks, because it's time for it to have that maintenance. So, it's, a lot of it's ongoing maintenance, and so that we're, we're trying to... We're not delaying a lot of things, but we are not, you can't do them all at once, because it really is a lot when you do it all at once.
Right, I know that they would actually be like...
We schedule them out.
...implications for the residents if we do everything, all this would be upheaval at the parks.
Health and safety is first, as always.
Yeah, so I don't think anybody's suggesting that we do everything all at once. I'm just trying to get a sense of overall, long-term, what we're looking at in order to get the parks where they need to be. So, you said that it's ballpark $600,000.
Just with the two items that I provided you.
Right, and then, but then the report says that the, the rent increase is only projected to generate $72,000 in additional revenue? So, in, is there enough in terms of funding sources that you... I know you mentioned CDBG and another $100,000 in reserves.
Also looking into grants. So, we are actively looking at other funding sources, and we have been.
Okay, well, I'm looking forward to hearing about all of the detailed sort of line item and the, if it's a three-year action plan, how we plan to, to take care of all of these items over the course of however many years. One other thing that we discussed last time was, because you're asking, or the recommendation is that we remove the rent cap and that there now be essentially an automatic either 2% or 3%, you know, whether you're a new tenant or an existing tenant, increase. We talked about public, the resident input, that's not reflected in the updated staff report, and so I just want to make sure that we are in fact going to implement the, when you provide... You said you physically provide written notice to every tenant, every year, when the rent increases going...
They're required a 90-day notice prior to any increases, and they have not had that in the past, because the past 10 years, we have not increased their rents.
Right, and so we talked about, we talked about just simply attaching stapling, just a paper that they can, if you have written comment about any, any thoughts on the rent increase, and you can drop it off at the management office, just so that there is an opportunity for public comment, because if it's going to be almost automatic, that would be a way to flag it. It's, it's a de minimis cost.
We can, we can do that.
I just want to make sure it's wasn't referenced in the report. I just want to make sure that we're...
We can include it in the notice, in some manner.
Wonderful.
In some manner, whether it's an attachment or a line saying this is how you can contact the staff and the management. We can do that.
Okay, wonderful. I just wanted to make sure that there is an opportunity for their feedback on an annual basis when these, these increases...
We've been, we've been going out, I know Laura and I have been, when we got back on in 2016, we've been, this has been going on eight years, we've been postponing a rent increase. So, the residents are well aware, unfortunately, for better for worse. It's come to the time that we have to slightly bump it a little bit to, to try to keep the account from going in the negative. But I appreciate all the hard work that's going on. I would like to see a capital improvement plan down the line. I know you will get one together. I know we have a motion second. Do we have any other discussion and/or possible...
Remove the question.
Ready to vote? Okay.
Start voting. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. So, that's going to take us out of... Yeah, that's going to take us out of Housing Authority. We're going to go and adjourn the Housing Authority. Thank you, Housing Authority members. Safe travels, Ms. Betts. Alright. Alright, so we're back into City Council. We're at the consent calendar, Item Number 6. We can motion everything all at once, or does anybody have anything they'd like to pull?
Yeah, I'd like to pull 6.5, 6.6, and 6.8, please.
Okay, pulling 6.5, 6.6, 6.8.
I'll move to the balance of the consent calendar.
We have a motion by Pro Tem Loa, second, Councilmember Bettencourt. Go ahead and begin voting, and post when ready.
Start voting. Motion passes.
Alright, thank you very much. That passes unanimously, taking us to Item Number 6.5. Do we need a staff report on it, or just discussion or question?
We have a staff report on that.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Carrie Smith, Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you for having me this evening. So, the item before you is to adopt Resolution CC 2024-027, adopting the City of Palmdale's asset naming and renaming policy. I know this is something that we've been looking at for a bit, so I'm happy to help answer questions.
Yeah, I didn't necessarily need a staff report.
Yeah, I didn't necessarily need a staff report. My question, thank you for your report and for putting this together. I know you, you put a lot of work into it. My question really was directed to the city attorney, um, and exhibit A, the policy itself. Um, I believe um, you approved this as to form, I don't understand. Um, C one F, the, the guiding principles. It says, no city asset shall be named after an elected official while that official remains in public office. And naming an asset after an elected official while in office will only be considered under extraordinary circumstances. What does that mean? I mean, that seems like contradictory language.
Well, it is not. Um, very typically, you don't have someone named while they're in office. But if there's unique circumstances and the community thinks it's worthwhile, this gives the, the flexibility, the opportunity to do it. It's a safety net. It, it's pretty straightforward that you tend not to, but if you need to, you can.
That's not what it says. It says, no city asset shall be named after an elected official, and then it says, and. And i- if you want to name an asset after an elected, elected official, it'll be considered under extraordinary circumstances. That's not the same.
Exactly, it says that. It will be named under extraordinary circumstances. Uh, you're. I, I don't know why you don't understand it, but.
I understand what it intended to say, but that's not what it says.
Well, staff thought this was appropriate. I see no legal deficiency in it.
I, I can under.
You've got a different opinion, you can do it.
I can understand what it's saying, that it prevents someone that's currently in office from having something named after oneself. Maybe using the power or the authority they may have to make that happen, but maybe on the other hand, maybe there is something that somebody. Did great, or maybe that unfortunately there was a tragedy and we want to name something after somebody. That would be the extraordinary circumstance. Um, you know.
So I just think there's a better way to say it. We could just say, only under extraordinary circumstances shall a city asset be named after an elected official while in office. Period. There's no conflicting statement there.
I, I mean, I guess it's the same, I understand it to be the same thing, I mean. I, I don't know if the, if the council feels any differently, but.
When you pulled this together, you pulled this from other jurisdictions and other formats. This is a standard format. If you want to change, we can change, but there's nothing wrong with this.
This might sound funny coming from me, but it sounds like splitting hairs.
Certainly open to what the council would, would like to do. I think we all understand the intent.
I think everyone understands it.
Yeah, I think we understand it.
Unless there's anything else, I'll move to approve the other.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion from Mayor Pro Temloa. Is there a second on the table? We have a second from uh, Councilmember Olson. Let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting. Motion passes.
Alright, thank you. Alright, that takes us to item number six, uh, six six. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Lynn Glynn, Director of Public Works. Item six point six is awarding a construction agreement with Griffith Company for a not-to-exceed amount of thirty-nine million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars. And also awarding a consultant agreement with M and S Engineers for project management services for a not-to-exceed amount of four hundred and eighty-five thousand thirty dollars. For project six seventy-two, which is the Palmdale Boulevard, State Route one thirty-eight and State fourteen interchange improvement project. And I'm available for any questions, or I can go more into detail.
I asked a lot of questions during the briefing. Um, I'm sure there's more questions. I'll just defer to the council to see if there's any more. Any more questions?
Very briefly, I mean, I, I think this is something that's uh, very significant at a very real travel intersection with the fourteen and Palm Boulevard. Uh, I have witnessed accidents of cars coming off of uh, the fourteen. Going northbound, exiting to Palmdale Boulevard and then uh, basically invading uh, the westbound lane. Uh, that's already in traveling. And uh, on one occasion, the car was completely flipped over, so I believe. In the briefing, uh, you indicated this would be addressed and that problem will be mitigated.
Yes.
Okay, and then there's going to be um, additional uh, work that's going to be done at that intersection.
Yes, I, I can give you a little bit of background. So we're gonna be doing some um, both northbound auxiliary rain and southbound lanes. Off-ramp uh, improvements. Uh, if you're heading southbound, getting off at Palmdale Boulevard, right now we have a, a one right, one left. It will now change two lefts, two rights. Uh, the, the, as you turn onto Palmdale Boulevard, that'll be reconfigured. It's still a signal at that intersection, so you'll still have the same, the same aspect there. As you're heading northbound. And getting off at Palmdale Boulevard, currently you have a free right, meaning you just turn right without any signalized intersection. Um, this will actually come to a stop. We were gonna take away that free right. You will come to a, a T-intersection similar to the other interchange. And you will have two lefts and two rights. The interchange improvements where the landscaping is at will all be remodified, more to a desert scape. Um, monument sign, you will have some retaining walls put on of both uh, interchange off ramps. And then also some aesthetic uh, treatments on the underpass walls going underneath uh, the freeway.
But you are gonna remove the um, eastbound merging lane into.
Yeah, that will all be reconfigured, that will all be reconfigured with your two lefts.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is, this is a great project and I do believe it's an excellent use of the Measure R grant funds. I, I. I know for a fact we need improvements right there. That Palmdale Boulevard entrance is one of the main entrances to the city for a lot of commuters in our valley, so. I, I've taken that many, many years of my life while coming back from work and uh, it's definitely due for an upgrade. So thank you for all the time that, that you and your staff have put into it to even just get it to this point.
Like to say, this is one of five um, uh, Measure R projects that we received back in, I think it was. It was a long time ago, twenty thirteen, or twenty thirteen, uh, we received a hundred and ten million dollars and this is one of five. Um, this is actually the second Measure R project that will be under construction. The first one was Rancho Vista Boulevard where we widened the, pretty much the main line. And we created that one straight through. Uh, um, instead you, as you were heading southbound, you had to. It was a bottleneck right at the auto mall, and so then it would back up on the freeway as you're trying to get off of Palmdale Boulevard. Now you have a lane that is dedicated to getting off on Palmdale Boulevard. So this is just a continuation of improvements as you're getting off on Palmdale. Um, so this is our second construction project. I like to say Lancaster's only in their first construction project, so.
And do we know how long this project will continue? When will it start and when will it stop?
Um, well, it is, it's about a four hundred and thirty-five working day. Um, upon award tonight. Um, we look to start construction probably summer. They have a, they have a, like a fifty-five day timeline to be able to get some middles in. Everything, organization with Caltrans, sheriffs, everything like that for, for closures and, and also coordinating with Caltrans with what they're doing, work on the fourteen. Um, so it is, it is a four, you know, it's a, a year and a half project.
It, it would be fair to say that we've got about a year and a half that our local residents will be able to work local and stay off the fourteen.
Yes, yes.
Then we had, we had some speakers earlier uh, from the carpenters and the ironworkers and uh. Uh, that's going to benefit the community as well, uh, as was pointed out by those members that spoke, so that's a very positive thing.
Alright, I, I just want to say that between six point six and six point eight. We're looking at sixty-five million dollars in those two projects alone on this agenda only. We're making significant investment into capital improvement projects and to this city and to our streets. I just wanted to highlight that. Regardless of what the disgruntled former mayor says online, we are moving things forward and we are getting things done.
Right, and that's all grant money. That's money not out of the general fund.
And that's not me, I'm not the disgruntled former mayor. That's not me.
No, this funding is all Measure R grant funding. There is no city general fund funding this.
And that's great.
We actually have some Measure M money grant funding also.
We love grant money.
You do.
Yes.
Yeah, so this is a win-win all the way around. This is, um, you know, win in terms of the much-needed public improvements. That um, will be um, effectuated through this work, but as was noted, this is part uh, uh, governed by the CWA. That's the Community Workforce Agreement. For those of you who don't know what the Community Workforce Agreement and why it's so important. It thirty percent, it requires that thirty percent of all of the construction hours awarded under these contracts. Will be given to veterans, will be given to local residents, will be given to women, will be given to trained apprentices. And then on top of that thirty percent, ten percent of disadvantaged, what we call transitional workers, those who are previously unhoused. Those who uh, are on social services, those are trying to reintegrate uh, into society, single mothers. I mean. The CWA, the, the Community Workforce Agreement is a very powerful tool, and under this contract. Uh, it's a forty million dollar contract, thirty percent alone is approximately twelve million dollars that we're reinvesting into our workforce locally. Uh, and then on top of that, the ten percent is another four million, that's sixteen million on this project alone, not to mention this, the, the item on six point eight. These are, is a remarkable win-win all the way around, so congratulations. I'm really uh, excited uh, to, to move these, uh, both of these items forward. Uh, I did have one technical question. Under the Community Workforce Agreement, in order to hold um, the contractors accountable. Um, to the terms of, of the CWA, they are required to sign a letter of assent. Um, has that letter of assent been signed? Cause it was, it wasn't included in the contract that was.
Um, so it is part, so the, the bidders, all the bidders did sign a letter of assent. They acknowledged that this is per CWA. So that is part of the bid package that is gets submitted along with their proposal.
Perfect, just wanted to make sure that was.
And then as we go through, as we go through the construction process prior to any of the subcontractors getting on it. Any of the subs need to follow the same rules that the general contractors are, so. We have a, a CWA liaison that will work between the unions and the city and the contractor, so absolutely excited, thank you.
Crew six point six.
Second.
We had a second from.
Yes.
Alright, let's do this.
Start voting. Motion passes.
Alright, there we go.
Before we move on, I just want to thank the, those in labor who came out to support the project. Been advocating for this kind of work for a long time and I, I know it's a long trek for you guys to come out here, uh, so thank you for being here.
Yeah, it's, it's a great, it's a great industry to work in. As a former apprentice, IBW worker and apprentice, I know what it's all about. So, we got it. Thank you very much. Alright, next item.
Item six point eight is awarding a construction contract with Sully Miller Contracting for a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-one million three hundred and ninety-four thousand. Four hundred and sixty-six dollars and also awarding a consultant agreement with M and S Engineers. For construction management services for a not-to-exceed amount of eight hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. This is for our project eight six nine, the Artillo Road Rehabilitation Project. It is, it has a term of a hundred and ten working days. It's um, just as a, it's sixteen miles of roadway that we will be either. Uh, repaving with a, a male and overlay, or we will actually do more grinding, more in, in-depth paving projects. Um, some of the roads that are, are gonna be done is Palmdale Boulevard from Fiftieth Street East to sixth, to Eightieth Street East. Uh, Avenue N from Fortieth to Forty-Fifth Street East, Thirty-Fifth Street East from S to R. Uh, Ten Street West from El- Elizabeth Lake Road to Rancho Vista Boulevard, Avenue R from Tierra Sabida to Sierra Highway. And Sixth Street East from Avenue R to East Palmdale Boulevard. Um, some of, uh, there are a couple of these roads that are tied in with the county, so we do have two co-op agreements with the county. That will technically give us back about two point five million dollars or two, I think it's two point five. Uh, two point one five million dollars reimbursement back from the county for, for the roadway. Um, any questions?
To move the item and then we can have a discussion afterwards by council.
I'll second.
Alright, a motion second.
I just want to say thank you. Sorry. I'm just very excited about Thirty-Fifth Street East finally getting taken care of. It's been in rough shape for a long time.
You actually got a positive email about that today, didn't you?
Did I?
I think you did. We all did.
Oh, did we all?
Oh, yes, you did.
We did.
I think it's a, it's a great effort uh, on the part of staff and uh, working together with a contractor and uh, with, with our uh. With our labor uh, organizations. Uh, it's something that's been needed. There's a lot of. One of the things that's always being brought up by residents is the condition of streets and roads. And I know that uh, this, this also covers Rayburn Road at Division. In other words, it starts at Tierra Sabida and goes east from there. Um, just with these rains, so the intersection of Division and Avenue R. Um, was like a lake. Cars were going through there and, and just really uh, splashing it up. So this is something that will uh, help the residents and um, I believe it will, it will also. Um, sort of make a flow between what's already going on Avenue R. And, and then uh, from Sierra Highway West. I believe all of that part is included in this contract.
Yes, however, it's not gonna change the actual drainage aspect of it. We do actually have some other capital improvement projects that we're working with. Consultants with regards to the drainage that's coming out of the Plona Vista area, the Anaverty Park and the Plona Vista Park. So it's, it will upgrade the road quality of it, but not change the drainage of it. Um, but we do have other projects coming forward.
Seemed to me that the uh, if you improve the, the road itself, that, that may mitigate the uh.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty torn up. It's, it's very torn up, and then also we're working with a developer at the north or southeast. Uh, corner to be able to get all of his infrastructure work in prior for us to go in and do the road.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah, the only thing I, this is a twenty-one point five million dollar project. That's another approximately eight million dollars that we are investing. In mortgage paying jobs locally. It's, this is another uh, remarkable project, so thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, no, I have a question. Will you tell me what that says? I keep trying to peek and I can't.
Welcome.
Says positive lifestyle.
Oh, there we go.
Home, home of the positive lifestyle.
For the whole community to see.
Yeah, so no, I have nothing left on this.
We're delivering jobs, that's a positive lifestyle.
Thank you, thank you for everything that you and your team does.
Right. Okay, let's go.
Voting. Motion passes.
Unanimous, thank you very much. Yes, I will make sure you see that. Okay, so that's gonna take, I just, that's gonna take us to item number seven, public hearing. Seven point one, Madam Clerk, will you read the resolution into the record?
Adopt Resolution Number CC twenty-four dash zero three nine. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving major modification twenty-four dash zero 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 three. A request to amend the conditions of approval for tentative track map six one eight nine four. To change the required design, to change the quiet resign, the required design. And timing for a new roadway bridge over the California Aqueduct within the Anaverty Nuevo specific plan.
How you doing?
Good, good evening, Mayor and Council. Eric Norris with Interwest, representing the Planning Department tonight. I have a brief presentation. Just give you a quick overview of the project. So what is in front of you, uh, as mentioned, is a request to amend the conditions of approval for an existing approved tentative map. Uh, map six one eight nine four, generally revolving around the timing of Bridge Road. Uh, which is a future roadway, which includes as part of it, a future crossing over the California Aqueduct. Uh, the new conditions also require the formation of a new CFD or Community Facilities District. That would affect the, basically the second half of the Anaverty development to provide funding for this bridge, roadway and other infrastructure. Really quick background, nineteen ninety-two, the what was then called the City Ranch Specific Plan was approved. A few years later in two thousand and five, uh, developer came in and received approval initially for uh, this tentative map six one eight nine four. Uh, twenty twenty-one now comes along, the specific plan is amended, it's renamed Anaverty Nuevo. Uh, as part of that approval, the conditions for this tentative map were amended to reflect some changes in the specific plan. Gets us up now to, well, actually, November twenty twenty-four, going back to the original approval of the map extension. A very variety of extensions were approved, which gives us uh, an extension date for that map of November of this year. So that brings us up to today, just give you a brief overview of kind of where we are in the specific plan. Uh, Anaverty Nuevo allows just a, a shade under thirty-five hundred dwelling units, about sixteen hundred have been developed. About sixteen hundred have been developed, so a little less than half, so about a little more than half left to go. Uh, eighteen hundred and seventy still remaining, of those four hundred and forty-eight, which are the units in this map, have been entitled. So the rest of the units, uh, the fourteen hundred or so will eventually come to this council and the Planning Commission to, to get approved. But we're talking about, uh, just the four hundred and forty-eight in, uh, this current tentative map. So the change of the conditions basically revolve, as I mentioned, around the bridge and around the timing of the bridge. So the table up here shows, um, the current timing for the, for a couple of different things. One is the completion of the bridge design, so those other infrastructure items you were just talking about. Obviously, you go through a design phase and then a construction phase, so currently the design phase is required to be completed. Uh, by the hundred and twelfth unit in that map. The proposal is to push that out and, uh, move that to the four hundred and forty-eighth unit, so basically completion of that tentative map. Then construction of the bridge currently is required to be completed by the two hundred and twenty-third unit. And again, they're moving that out to the five hundred and eighteenth unit, either in this map or in this map and elsewhere in Anavertie Nuevo. So basically pushing that, uh, completion further out. There's also a condition to form, as I mentioned, a Community Facilities District for the second half, more or less, of Anavertie Nuevo. Uh, to cover infrastructure including this bridge, so all the future units. Uh, from this tract on in the rest of Anavertie Nuevo would pay to that CFD, uh, to fund the construction of the, uh, infrastructure. Your Planning Commission looked at this in March, uh, considered the item and recommended that the council adopt the resolution. Uh, which is twenty twenty-four dash zero three nine to approve major modification twenty-four zero 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 three. And find that the environmental impacts of what you're being asked to do tonight are addressed by the. Uh, original EIR and the addendum that was approved with the amendment of the specific plan. Um, I'm ready to answer any questions, we also have, uh, Chris Yellick from the applicant is, uh, here tonight, anything I can't handle. We also have Megan Taggart from Planning, if there's anything either of us can't handle, so that's my presentation, I'll be happy to answer anything I can.
Alright, thank you, should I, before you start, should I?
I'll move to approve the item and then we can have discussion.
Yes.
So we gotta open the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so I move to open the public hearing? Okay. Do I have a second for the public hearing? Uh, motion second for public hearing? Uh, everyone say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public hearing, we have discussion, uh, comments, questions?
So we have, we have a, um, a speaker card on this item, it's Chris Yellick.
Okay, Chris, go on down.
Uh, I wrote Mayor Bishop and members of the City Council, thank you for, uh, listening to this item tonight, you know, we. I'm here to ask you to support that motion. Again, I think everybody knows Anavertie has been at a standstill for a number of years. And we've been working with a number of builders over the years to try to get some momentum going and. We've been lucky enough to work with Lennar Homes on several other projects. They've shown commitment toward moving forward on the Anavertie project now. And we'd love to have them out there and I think deferring Bridge Road for us, what that allows us to do is really to get them going. To have approving ground out there, establish values, which they will do and bring up values, we work with them in several other communities. Um, so we'd like you to consider this, again, it really would be a jumpstart, I think, for the Anavertie project. And Lennar just doesn't come in to do four hundred homes, I mean, they'd be in to do a majority of what we'll be doing out there. And, um, they build great quality homes, I think most of you would know they're in probably the top five builders in the United States. They've got a great balance sheet and, um, they've been great to work with on other projects, so. I'm here to answer any questions too and I would just ask for your support on this, cause I think it would really help get our project moving forward, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel? We have a motion from Mayor Proton Loa.
I'll second.
The second from Councilmember Olson. Any discussion or ready to vote?
Well, I have a question.
Yeah.
So, um, it says that this is gonna be a point of ingress and egress to the Avenue S corridor, is that for all residents of Anavertie? Or is that just for service vehicles for fire and emergency vehicles, who's gonna be using this bridge is my question?
Well, ultimately, the bridge is gonna be a public roadway.
It will be.
Yes, it'll be a public roadway for anybody to use.
Okay, just wanted to be sure.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, yeah, as a resident of Anavertie for fifteen years, I'll say it's been stagnant and there hasn't been very much growth. So it'll be nice to see some type of a development happen in that area again. So I think we're ready to vote, so we have a motion and second, go ahead and vote in the computer system.
Start voting.
And post and ready.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, that takes us to item seven point two. That's the adopted resolution of the City Council, City of Palmdale denying the appeal twenty-four dash zero 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 two. And upholding Planning Commission Resolution PC twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one to deny general plan amendment. Twenty-three zero 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 one zone change, twenty-three zero 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 two and specific plan amendment twenty-two dash zero zero one. Um, I think we are gonna continue this one?
I, I think that's the plan, that's at least what the staff recommendation is, I just have a question. Um, this has been sort of lingering for a while and we're now pushing this to four months out till July. I mean, are there, what are the significant issues, is, we, we continued once and then we continued it again and now we're pushing it out four months. What is gonna take four months to get this resolved?
We had a discussion, um, I'm gonna let our city attorney answer that, so I don't say anything improper or privileged.
Um, well, this is, as you recall, there was a subcommittee set up to interact with the interest holders. To find a compromise that worked for everybody, they're still in that process. And as far as I know, the, the subcommittee is still working with the, the proper.
Right, and the subcommittee is made up of Mayor Bishop and Councilmember Olson, which is why I direct the question to Mayor Bishop.
We, we had, uh, meetings with all interests in this. And based on a recommendation from a consultant, in conversation with the auto dealers, in conversation with the applicants, we all agreed to a hundred and twenty days.
As we work through some of the issues, but there, we're working on middle ground, I guess that's probably the, the best way to put it.
Can I ask a question, so if we're gonna be, um, table on this for now, are we still allowed to hear people make public comment on this?
Um.
Or not?
It, it, it's best to die.
No, just push it.
Because the, typically when there's comment, you have all parties available.
Oh, okay.
We, we don't have the parties, it's continued.
Okay, I, I, I just didn't know if there was somebody here that came specifically for that, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, it's, again, it's. From a land use and, uh, legal land use, there is a lot of moving parts. From a policy standpoint, there's a lot of moving parts. And then for the, I'll say the, the cities, the, the subcommittees advancement of economic development activities. There's a lot of moving parts.
Oh.
Um, there is a consultant being used and they have particular expertise on this. Their timelines somewhat impact all of this, so it isn't, um. Something being ignored or given short shrift, it's actually be given long shrift and, uh.
Okay, I just, just wanted to ask the question, thank you so much.
That was part of the consultant said, give, what, sixty, ninety days?
I think, I thought we all agreed to a hundred and twenty, but, or sooner.
Yeah.
I would like sooner, but we all agreed to a hundred and twenty, I just wanna say, between the conversation with the consultant and the auto dealers and the applicants. I'm pretty confident that we're coming towards a solution that's gonna be beneficial to everybody. Uh, obviously, our concern is to make sure that it's beneficial to the City of Palmdale. So the devil's in the details and so let the devil continue to work those out and we'll bring it back when it's ready.
And again, as you noted, this isn't a, a mandatory hundred and twenty, if it all comes together tomorrow. Great, you can bring it back, rather than keep putting this on the agenda for the short extensions. That's when there was the, the discussion among all the participants in the hundred and twenty. Seen the long bracket that fit, again, with the goal being shorter, so. Uh, if nothing else, it's giving certainty to the project and letting the clerk hit or predict their agendas a little bit.
Yeah, I don't know that that's true, I, I, the, the recommendation and the report specifically references. Uh, the July seventeen, twenty twenty-four meeting, which puts on notice to all of the, those interested parties that that's the date that it's gonna be heard. So I, you know, I, I, I would caution us all to think that we could, you know, have. If we're ready to bring this back next, next council meeting without providing ample notice to all of the people involved.
Yeah, that's very normal, there would be notice given, this isn't a problem unless you wanna make it one, so this is very, very standard.
Okay, let's continue to work through the details, I'm confident with our subcommittee meeting that we're working in the right direction. Um, so yeah, we have a motion, do we have a motion second? To continue, we have a motion and second, let's go ahead and vote.
We have a motion? Mister Loa?
Yes.
Start voting. Motion passes.
And when I said let the devil continue to work on the details, I didn't mean you specifically, but as an attorney, I'm sure you've been called worse.
I, I accepted it as a compliment.
Alright, we have fun at our council meetings, don't we? Alright, that takes us to item number eight, new business, uh, council discussion, I think we also have a report from our city clerk.
Yes. So at the February twenty-first, um, twenty twenty-four meeting, um, the council directed staff to conduct research on how cities handled. Um, requests for language interpretation services. Staff surveyed twenty-nine cities and out of the twenty-nine cities, the following information was confirmed. Fifty-nine percent require a twenty-four, forty-eight or seventy-two hour request for interpretation services. Twenty-four percent have an outside interpreter at every meeting and seventeen percent have staff on standby to interpret as needed.
Do those cities, um, have their meetings once a month or twice a month, cause it matters if you're paying by the hour?
That's a very good question.
Oh, sorry.
We surveyed the cities to find out what they provided, but we didn't find out whether or not they had by two, two meetings a month.
Okay.
Or one meeting, but most cities do have two meetings a month, most cities do, if not more.
Okay, thank you.
You know, as, yeah, as was noted, um, I think Mister Flores noted that, um, Ms Lopez. Uh, does a good job of interpreting, so if, if we had a staff member, it, it looks like seventeen percent have a staff member on standby.
Yes.
That would be, that would be that now, so would that, um, indicate that perhaps? And I don't know whether, whether she receives bilingual pay or not for this, um, but if she were to be designated. That would also, uh, be compensated for her ability to do that, am I right about that or perhaps?
Do have city employees, um, Janelle, can you answer that question? We do have city employees that receive a stipend, automatic stipend, whether or not they interpret or not, within that.
To my knowledge, with the city program, um, there is a, a select group of city employees that receive, if they speak, uh, uh, Spanish or an additional language. Fluently, they receive additional pay, um, for that in order for them to interface with the public and whatnot. Mike and, I, I just, I'm only interjecting, um, to, uh, Mister Loa's, um, reference to Ms Lopez. Because I think there's a pool of employees that we can pull from, she is an assistant city manager and she's here. Um, serving, uh, very specific functions and oversight role, uh, in these meetings. And I think that maybe we can develop from that pool of employees who are receiving the stipend as opposed to, um, you know, just pointing out. Ms Lopez as, as the designated translator, um, for, for issues, but on top of that, I just wanna know.
May I finish my comments, thank you. Um, so I was just asking, you know, about, about that, I, I happened to be on the, on Spanish radio with her this morning. And I commented on the fluidity and, and, and ease, uh, with which she, um, addresses issues. Sometimes are pretty complicated, given all the things that are going on in the city that were reported on at that, uh, radio program that we do every month. It doesn't have to be Ms Lopez, but it could be a staff member that has that level of ability in the Spanish and English languages. Uh, is, is all that was playing out, so that would be one alternative to, um, adopt the seventeen percent. And, and maybe there's other alternatives like hiring an outside, uh, firm that has interpreters that could be on standby with notice. Uh, that their services will be needed.
May I make a comment? So I agree with Andrea that we probably have a pool of employees who would be interested in doing this. I don't think we should assign someone to do it unless they're willing to do it, cause a lot of people don't like public speaking, believe it or not. And other people have a lot of duties on their plate, so if we could maybe do a survey of employees who are getting the bilingual pay. Find out who's available to do that and put them on rotation so that they don't have to give up every first Wednesday of the month, they could, you know, rotate and do soccer or ballet with their kids. I think having a pool of employees to pull from would be really beneficial and I think that we have to have someone here at each and every meeting to accommodate the public.
And o- over the years, cause I know, I'll be fast, uh, over the years, uh, I, we've seen other, other persons that come in. I think there's been Korean, Farsi, other languages of, of, of individuals that needed assistance, so we could always hire. Uh, an interpreting service that could provide those, uh, yeah, when needed.
Okay, great, I actually wanted to thank Ms Alakon for bringing this forward, because the more I started to think about, especially in our, our briefing. About how we can kinda incorporate technology into this to try to make it inclusive for everyone. Just doing some research online, I found a, a company or a program called Kudo, which is specifically for town halls, public functions. That has software, translation software for almost any language imaginable, which is, um. Which I think would be a little bit easier to do it and also more cost effective for the city to buy the software. And it also is inclusive of all languages, so you can come in, you have your tablet, your earphone, you can listen and watch the meeting at the same time. It also, it helps with, um, just the reliability of a translator and also it just, I think it just makes it more accessible. So I think, I'm excited about this, I just, I think we should take a look at how we can incorporate technology. Because there's the reliability of a translator, there's accuracy. I remember a couple of times I heard that, you know, maybe sometimes the soft, the, the earphones didn't work or they didn't understand everything correctly. Because the translator was trying to whisper, so there's a lot of stuff like that, I think we can do better, I think there's a way to do this. That is inclusive of everyone, but the way it looks right now, if we were to spend seventy something thousand a year on a translator. Extrapolate that over ten years, you're looking at seven hundred thousand dollars for a person to stand there for a service that could be done with technology. We could save all that tax money, so as a, as a steward of public funds.
Have a really good use of measure A D money.
I think so.
Alright.
Alright, but that's, I wanna defer to the other council members, see if they have any other ideas.
This, this is just purely, uh, discussion, right, that, there's no action. Okay, well, so I've been thinking a lot about this and, um, I agree with the mayor that we do have to upgrade our technology. Um, there's programs out there that can live stream from multiple languages. And so we should have that available to all of the public of Palmdale, one of the problems is, um. The, the translators in the room and they're trying to translate in real time and then other people are complaining that that's distracting to them. So I said, why can't the translator kinda be isolated so that there's not that? And the answer was that there was a delay on the granicus, so I agree with the mayor that we, we have to do better with our technology, this is twenty twenty-four. We can do better than a delay without translation, so I support that idea of upgrading.
So Mayor, regarding it being, like, as you're speaking is translating, correct? But what about when they get up to speak in Spanish, how does it get to us, will it come to our computers so we can see what they're saying? I'm just trying to understand the software, this, and maybe we don't need to do that today, but.
No, I, I, I don't know.
It's one thing for them to understand us, but we need to understand them too.
It's, it's gonna be a blend, it's, yeah, it will be a blended approach, but we're gonna include technology and we're gonna be.
But there will never not be a time where there's someone in the room that cannot translate. I think as we said, we have, uh, a very diverse staff.
We got richer.
But I also think that, that we should have, I agree with Mister Flores, that. Uh, seventy-two hour notice to request translation just doesn't work, because we post the agendas seventy-two hours in advance. So you would have to request the minute you see it, you would have to know, like, look at the agenda and go, oh crap, I need a translator. I think that that's too much to ask, we need to give people a little bit more time to digest what they're reading. So I recommend that we have a consultant that we can pull from forty eight hours in advance in multiple languages. But no matter what, we will always have someone in the room for our Spanish speaking community.
Right.
So I think that this is like a multi-level approach.
It'll be a blend of options between having someone on staff, on call, and the technology available so nobody gets left behind.
Yeah, I'm just really delighted to hear the council's overwhelming support for this. I, I suggested this quite some time ago and this has been a long time coming. So thank you for your support and for your suggestions in terms of utilizing technological innovation. I think all of that is absolutely worthy of exploring. To dovetail off of what council member Olson was saying, currently our, our process is we have to provide, somebody has to provide seventy two hours notice uh, in order to, uh, request a translator. Our agendas are posted on Thursdays. City staff is, our offices are closed on Friday. So technically, in order to provide seventy two hours notice, the, a member of the public would have to provide the notice by Sunday night. I mean, that's really not realistic and feasible and, you know, the staff is not checking their email at, you know, on Sunday night and then securing a translator first thing Monday morning. The seventy two hour process is just not working. But on top of that, people don't, you know, you, you don't necessarily know if you're going to have time off, if you're going to have, you know, a couple of hours available to stop by a council meeting and chime in. So you, and you know, you don't know if you should submit a request for a translator in advance. A couple of other points I did want to make in terms of the offering, utilizing the pool. So there are those that want to publicly comment, and so we've seen how that sort of process works. But there are also those who don't want to offer a public comment, but who do want to listen and who do want to absorb and in, and sort of participate in their, in their way, uh, in the meeting and stop by and just listen. So the technology to be able to just come in and access the equipment and just sit and listen to all of the meeting, I think is important, whether they say they want to comment or not. I think it's really important that we have, um, full translation for the entire course of the meeting. Uh, so that even, even if they don't want to offer comment, they can actually understand what we're talking about. We're talking about the construction contracts and whatnot.
And then actually the software will translate it in subtitles in whatever language you ask.
Wonderful. I think all of this is wonderful. I mean, our, our city of Palmdale's population is a hundred and seventy thousand. Fifty two point three percent of our population speaks English as a second language at home. That's over ninety thousand of our residents who, if they walked in the doors of our council chambers, would not understand what is going on without the ability to access a translator. So I, this, this couldn't be any more critical in terms of civic particip- participation and engagement and bringing people into the fold and into, um, uh, the, the process of local governance. So thank you again for, for your support and, and thoughtfulness in terms of implementing, um, new ideas moving forward. As it's, this is a, a new, I, a new business item, I would like to make a motion that we move forward with implementing, um, uh, permanent translation services at every regularly scheduled council meeting, uh, and we can continue to explore, um, technological opportunities. But, uh, i- in the interim, we can hire a temporary contractor. The report indicates that a contractor costs twenty four hundred dollars, uh, uh, per meeting. Uh, I actually have a, one of the invoices from a previous meeting and it was half that, it was eleven hundred dollars uh, for the meeting. So I, I don't know that the, the, that the budget, the forecasted budget, um, is entirely accurate. So I think it's a lot less, uh, half of what has been projected if we just hire, uh, if we keep a consultant, um, on hand to do that. But, um, so I would just move that, that we implement a translation moving forward at every regular council meeting.
I think we already, I think we already do have someone on contract, but.
Currently, we do not have a contract with an interpreter. We use several different services though.
Okay, and they are available?
They are.
Okay, I'd like to. Yeah, definitely.
Could we have this as an action item on the next council agenda so that we know exactly what it is that we'd be voting on?
Absolutely.
I'd like more information before, I'd like to encompass the whole package of what software we're going to use and how we're going to do this.
What translation service?
The translation, yeah, a little bit more information before we pull the trigger.
And I can absolutely appreciate that because if there's anybody who loves information, it's me, uh, and who likes things in full complete packages, it's me. But, um, we're walking into the budget season and it's really important for all members of our city to be able to be engaged in the budget process. So while we develop this full, full scope program, I really would encourage us to implement and to retain um, a translator for the next meetings for however long it takes us to develop the full blown plan.
Is two weeks enough time to come back with what, that, okay.
Agenda is this for action next council meeting.
Okay.
Okay, you have enough time. Okay, perfect.
Wait, with the caveat that a translator will be, um, utilized at the upcoming council meeting, correct?
If necessary.
Why, if necessary?
Okay.
Right, you're good with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, is that, that's your motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Agenda is it for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
But I want to make sure we encompass, um, I want to make sure we, the technology, the blend of all the different options that are going to help make sure that it's inclusive of everyone in, in Palmdale, that we have services.
So can, can I go ahead and ask now at, give you my seventy two notice, seventy two hour notice that we need a translator at the next meeting?
Right, that was what I'm saying, with the, with the notice that we will be retaining a translator for the course of the entire meeting and the upcoming council.
You know, we'll work through the details because maybe, you know, when we come back. Maybe when we come back, it goes from seventy two to twenty four. So we work something. So it's all in the details yet again, so let's keep working on this.
All right, call for a question.
Okay. We have a motion and second. Let's go ahead and vote in the computer.
Okay, start voting.
So next time will be an action.
Motion passes.
Yes. There we are, okay. All right, that takes us to item number nine, council reports, announcements, requests for future agenda items. I'm sorry, to my left here.
Your left?
My left.
Well, that would be me. It's been a very busy, busy month. Um, so I'll just go down the list here. I went ahead and participated in the Palmdale Aerospace Academy Read Across America, where we read to elementary school kids. Excuse me, I've been sick, I'm a little hoarse. Um, on March sixth, I did Spanish talk radio. On March sixth in the evening, I, or actually the afternoon, I did an A V Edge luncheon. That was very informative. Also, that night, we had a regular council meeting, so that was a very long day. From March tenth to March thirteenth, I attended the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference in Washington, D.C. I, I was able to work with a group to try and get funding for a lot of things in our city. I attended the opening session and I have to say that I was honored to watch President Biden speak. It's not very often you get to see the president speak in person, and I was also able to see Secretary of Transportation Pete Buttigieg speak in person. And, um, as, as much as I don't want to say this, you know, because I'm not a Democrat, Biden was flawless in his speech. He did not falter in any way. He did not get lost and wander. He gave a really good speech and I'm going to give him credit for doing so. Um, also on March eleventh, I attended the, um, at the conference, I went to the Military Communities Council meeting, learned a lot about what they're doing at the national level for our local veterans. There's a lot of opportunities coming up that we will be working hand in hand with them on to provide more services for our veterans. On March fifteenth, I attended the League of California Cities Desert Mountain Division meeting. And I was very proud to see that Lancaster City had also joined us for that, that regional meeting. I know, that's, that's what, that was the first time. So, and they actually sat at our table, so that was really, really good. On March sixteenth, I attended the A V Boots on the Ground Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Ceremony. It was a beautiful ceremony. I was very pleased to be there. And I support our troops, uh, past, present, and future. March sixteenth, I also did the, um, Seasons of Service Spring Basket Assembly. March sixteenth, I attended the Palmdale Playhouse Seussical, the Musical, with my grandson, who is three, and my granddaughter, who was eight. They really enjoyed it, so did I. March twentieth, I did a regular council meeting. March twenty first, I attended the Sanitation District Twenty Board Meeting. March twenty third, I attended the Caesar Chavez Day, um, and was able to actually meet, as with all of us that were there. Caesar Chavez's, was it grandson or great grandson? Grandson. So that was a pleasure and, and quite an honor. March twenty sixth, I took my grandson to, um, see the Books and Barks at Palmdale City Library. That's where kids get to practice reading to service animals so that they can learn to read and not feel embarrassed if they miss a word because the puppies don't know the difference. I had a, um, a briefing and a meeting with Waste Management on March twenty eighth. And I attended the, um, March thirtieth U R Love Event. It was originally scheduled at Ponce de la Square, but I believe it was raining that day, so we moved it indoors. And then on March thirtieth, I attended the A V Veteran Community Action Coalition, Coalition Veterans Dinner. Um, and that was a, a very nice event that they had over at Legacy Commons. And then, other than that, I worked my other job and helped raise my grandchildren, and it was a very busy month. So I'm done.
All right, yeah, you were busy that month. All right. Mr. Loa.
I did many of the same things that, um, Ms. Bettencourt did. We had, uh, at the A V T A, um, the unmet, uh, public needs for transportation in Los Angeles County. We, on March the fifth, I met with, uh, Ben Gokee from Palmdale Regional Medical Center and Dr. Roger Gary and regarding, uh, implementation of mental health program to benefit residents of the city of Palmdale. Uh, on March sixth, uh, early in the morning, the same day as the council meeting, uh, Palmdale Sheriff's Boosters Board Meeting. Uh, then there was a luncheon that same day at, in, at the Rancho Vista Golf Course. There was that evening, that was a regular city council meeting, so yes, it was a long day. Hardly any, any time, uh, for, uh, other things. March seventh, SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments Transportation Committee Meeting, I attended that as well. On March the ninth, there was, uh, Miranchito Grand Opening, uh, on Palmdale Boulevard at the fourteen. That used to be Roxy's, uh, it is, is now Miranchito. And, um, they, they had a splendid grand opening. It was just really one of the best, uh, they went all out. They had a stage, they had bands, they had, um, mariachi. Um, and then they, they provided food for hundreds of people.
Wow.
So that was, that was something very impressive. Uh, March tenth to, uh, thirteenth, I joined, uh, Ms. Bettencourt, uh, and the mayor, as well as Ms. Perez and, uh, Nardi Lopez in a travel to National League of Cities. And our express purpose in going there was to, uh, obtain funds for the road separation or grade separation at Avenue M and Sierra Highway and at Rancho Vista and Sierra Highway. So I, I believe we had a very successful meeting with Congressman Mike Garcia regarding that. As well as bringing it to the attention of Senator, uh, Padilla's office, as well as Senator, uh, Butler's office, uh, both of, of which we met with. I also had the, uh, opportunity to join the California League of Cities in having, um, a, uh, discussion with Senator Padilla and, and Senator Butler. I was, uh, able to ask a question regarding mental health and, and fentanyl, uh, what's happening on a national level. Uh, in fact, Senator Padilla is at the forefront of, um, addressing that issue on a national level. Which he, uh, uh, is definitely concerned with and believes that it is a, uh, major problem in America that is not being sufficiently addressed. And then Senator, Senator Butler, uh, also has taken the initiative in the issue of, of fentanyl. And, uh, uh, she, uh, uh, presented a, a, a good program in the initiatives that she's taking at a national level. We met with the Department of Transportation, again, to talk about the, uh, grade separation, other transportation issues here. And with the Federal Railroad Association, we learned, actually, we didn't learn, we know that dealing with the railroad companies here, the railroad that is going across Palmdale Boulevard, again, it takes you five or six or seven minutes when the train is going by, when, and, and it really backs the traffic up. We need to, uh, deal with that. But we made some contacts there for perhaps taking some action there. As I indicated, uh, met with Congressman Garcia. On March the sixteenth, A V Boots on the Ground Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Ceremony. That was very well attended by Vietnam veterans, other veterans, uh, organizations, and so on. The Palmdale, uh, Seussical, the Musical, on March sixteenth, I was able to attend that as well. Very enjoyable. Uh, that, on March twentieth, council meeting. On March twenty sixth, the A V T A Board of Directors meeting. And then on March thirtieth, the A V Veterans Community Action Coalition Veterans Center, along with Ms. Bettencourt and, uh, and Marilyn Reese. That's what I did.
Was that it? All right, Eric, you're up.
Okay, well, I won't go over everything that I did. I'll just highlight a couple. Honestly, because my list is a little shorter than yours, that's why. Season of Service, uh, the mayor and I participated in a graffiti abatement. We got to spray some graffiti from the graffiti trucks. I had my son with me and he thought that was so cool. He's, ever since then, he's been telling me where he sees graffiti. So I'm just giving public works a heads up that there's going to start to be more reports coming in because it's just, it was great. The Vietnam Veterans Ceremony, the Welcome Vietnam Veterans Ceremony, that is a special event, um, that is a product of our, um, uh, what's it called? Positive Change Cohort. Uh, it's a brilliant idea. As a veteran myself who volunteered for the military, I recognize that a lot of these Vietnam veterans did not. They had no choice. They were sent. And so to be welcomed back or not welcomed back home after their service is a disgrace. It's, uh, it's a, just a low point in this country's history. So what they're doing to try to right that wrong is amazing. And if you have not been, I recommend you go next year. It is a great, great service to our city and for those that serve our country. Couple of meetings here. The one thing that I want to talk about is, uh, the mayor and I flew back yesterday from Pueblo, Colorado. Supervisor Catherine Barker invited us to tour their Transportation Center of Excellence. The Federal Railroad Association owns about fifty two square miles of land where they're testing all sorts of different trains. And we're proposing, or the supervisor is proposing with L.A. Metro, with the city of Palmdale, that we build one locally on Ninety Street East. What we saw was great, but honestly, it was a little, what's the word we used, underwhelming? Because all they do is testing. So we got to see a hydrogen train that just broke the record for longevity on one fueling of hydrogen. It went seventeen hundred miles. The manufacturer of that train is in Salt Lake City, Utah. So when they manufacture the train, they have to truck it all the way to Pueblo, Colorado, where they then put it on the tracks and do the testing. What we're proposing here is manufacturing and testing. If we can do that, why wouldn't all these manufacturers want to come locate here in the city of Palmdale? It's a lot for them. And these testings are mandatory, so they have to do it. Why wouldn't they want to manufacture where the testing is done? I think that this is going to be a big economic boom once we get this off the ground. So I want to thank the supervisor for inviting us. I think that this is a project we have to keep pushing forward on with all of our might because the jobs and the revenue that this can create is going to be a boom for the city of Palmdale. So I'm, I'm excited about what I saw, but I'm more excited about what's coming to Palmdale because we are going to do it better.
And we have skilled labor to do that.
Yeah.
And just to, to, to dovetail off of that, in numbers, what the Center for Transportation Excellence will deliver is a hundred and fourteen thousand projected jobs and projected economic impact of eleven point five billion dollars with a B. That is housing, that is infrastructure, that is a, a remarkable transformation for not just the Antelope Valley, but the state of California, and quite frankly, the United States is part of the Buy USA initiative from the administration, uh, so that we're no longer shipping jobs overseas. We can do that work right here. So, uh, I agree, the Center for Transportation Excellence is, uh, a remarkable, um, uh, project and very excited that we're all moving forward, uh, to deliver it.
Can I say one more thing about that? Because what we saw was just trains, right? There was no manufacturing, just train testings. So that economic benefit only comes if we can bring the manufacturing here. But it's not just trains that we're trying to do at our center, we're gonna do buses, we're gonna do all forms of transportation. So this really will be the Center for Transportation Excellence, where that was a nice train testing facility.
So there's one other T in it, it's the Center for Transportation and Technology Excellence. So it will be the hub for innovation in transportation technology. It is going to be a remarkable game-changing project, so thank you for that report. Anyhow, I don't know how I follow that, but I, I, look, I've got twenty-three events and meetings that I attended. Some of the substantive work that I just want to highlight. Moving forward and met with staff and some other stakeholders on developing the first domestic violence shelter in the city of Palmdale. There exists not one bed and not one shelter for victims of domestic violence in the city of Palmdale. I find it deplorable that anybody has to make the choice of staying home in a violent situation or living out on the street. I know Councilmember Bettencourt and I share that same vision, and I think the council as well. So I'm, I'm doing some substantive work to advance that. Also, I met with and spoke with the CEO of Habitat for Humanity to potentially bring a project to my district, which would be remarkable, building homes for those who need it. And then the L.A. County Youth Commission had a listening session and I spoke with some of the commissioners. It was very informative, Supervisor Barker was also there. And it gave me the, reminded me of my initial thought when I was first elected. I think Councilmember Olson and I shared this vision of establishing a youth council for the city of Palmdale. Or at, you know, maybe even in the Antelope Valley, our kids are our future and we need to listen to them. We, we really don't have avenues for them to participate in our local governance and provide feedback. And, and they are the innovators, they know technology in a way that we don't. So I would like to, while I submit this informational report with my, the meetings and events that I've attended, I request that a future agenda item be brought back, that we consider the establishment of a Palmdale Youth Council. And, and then, exciting news, I will be hosting on April thirtieth, a Council District Five Town Hall. I want to hear from you, we are walking into budget season, I want to hear from those in my council district. And anybody in the city is welcome to attend and, and just share with me their thoughts on how Measure A V funds should be used, how I can better serve the city, how we as a city can better serve you. I will be offering presentations on just sort of an overview of what Measure A V is and what those funds are used for. Just an update on the Measure R Resurfacing Project and timelines, because I know that's of concern to, to my constituents. I'll also be offering a presentation on the Together California Village, which will be established adjacent to McAdam Park. And it will be a housing, a transitional housing facility for transitional age youth, those are aging out of the foster system. So that's a remarkable project that we're looking forward to. So there's a lot of good news that we're gonna be sharing at the town hall. But on top of the good news, I want to hear from you. So to all of those who are listening online or live streaming, please, I will be posting this and I, I hope the city will post it on their website as well. Please join me April thirtieth, here in these council chambers, five to seven P.M., all are welcome. Students, parents, community organizations, business owners, want to hear from everybody, so. Excuse me?
Live streaming it or zooming it?
Yeah, so I think we're gonna talk about logistics, so long as the, the city manager will support it, I will say yes to it all. Thank you.
All right, I'll jump in here. As you can see, we all had a very positive, busy month, lots of stuff going on in the city of Palmdale. I'll just go down some of the stuff here, I did Read Across America, the Chick-fil-A Grand Opening, Spanish Talk Radio, A V Edge Lunch. Hispanic Chamber Installation Gala, Neo Ranchito, the D.C. Tour with, with Councilmember Bettencourt. And Mayor Pro Tem Loa was extremely beneficial, we're hoping to bring home thirty, forty, fifty million dollars in federal grants for the grade separation and the road improvements on Avenue M and Rancho Vista Boulevard. Speaking of Avenue M, I drive past the new Trader Joe's Distribution Center almost on a daily basis. And as of the last day or two, the walls are now up. So it's, it's, it's going up fast, they're still on time to be finished by the end of this year. And hopefully in business and have employees working next year. It's huge, it's one point two million square feet, it's one of the largest private companies come the Antelope Valley. It's, it's gonna have a huge impact, and it's just not distribution, it's food packing, food handling, logistics, driving, management, there's all sorts of jobs from entry level to high-paying level. So it's really gonna be good for our community, for the region as a whole to have that, that kind of private industry in our valley. Let's see, we met with the congressman, graffiti abatement was great. I will say, top complaint I get, graffiti. I probably, I complained, probably I got another email today, the day before that, and it's all different areas of the city. It's really heartbreaking too to know that we've got three trucks and, and a full-time, an entire crew of staff dedicated to clean up graffiti. And it's still, it's like eating a soup with fork, you're just, so we're continuing to go at it and looking at more enforcement actions as far as prosecution.
Law enforcement did apprehend more youth graffitiing two days ago, I believe. Again, they had a gun, so be careful, if you see it, don't confront them, just report it. Let us know right away, but don't confront them, but law enforcement, code enforcement, they're doing the best they can. The Public Works team is doing the best they can, but you can't, you can't predict behavior. So the best we can do is just stay on top of it.
Yeah, and you know, there's very few cities in California that have three trucks. And we as a city have taken it seriously enough to spend the money, and it's not cheap for those trucks, but we have three in our city just to maintain the, the appearance and the quality of life for our residents here.
And kudos to the code enforcement team because they took part in that. Code enforcement team is working hand-in-hand with the Sheriff's Department, they're united. Our code enforcement team is out there to make sure that these quality of life issues are addressed. So when you think code enforcement, think Sheriff's Department. A V Boots on the Ground, I attended that with some of my other colleagues. Eric, you said it better than I could even imagine, so thank you for covering that. It was a shame they weren't welcome home. Palmdale Playhouse Seusical, one of the best musicals, Seusical, one of the best plays I've seen in a long time. And I'm looking forward to what comes next. We had board meetings, sanitation meetings, mock trials, that was great to see all the kids. Put in that hard work for the mock trials. It was actually a pretty big gathering because Santa Clarita doesn't have a mock trial program anymore. So we, we had the ceremony at Highlands High and the room was filled and I said, wow, this is huge. And they said, well, we've incorporated with Santa Clarita now, because now it's Palmdale Lancaster and Santa Clarita and all the kids are, which is good because I think it actually brings you more youth to the table to challenge each other and, and public speak in front of bigger audiences. I think that's actually, makes the program a little bit better. Egg hunt at the amphitheater, Caesar Chavez Day, that was great. Thank you to the Ventura Foundation for putting that together, that was held over at Dominic Masari. Film Lab with the Ghetto Films School, I attended that with Councilmember Alacron, thank you for being there. Fentanyl Awareness Saves Distribution, lots of stuff going on. And today, I met with Joe Ellis from Positive Lifestyle. So if you're wondering what this piece of artwork is here, he, he gifted this to the city. And he really has a message of positivity to spread, and he's been through our ambassador program. I think if, if you know Palmdale, you know Joe, he's no stranger to the community. And he really is a fantastic individual and we're so blessed to have him in our community.
He was there at the desert cleanups, he's there at graffiti cleanups, he is at, I mean, everywhere we go. Mr. Ellis, you're there and you're, we always with a smile on your face, you greet us, you were at the, the Desert Sands, you know, park grand opening, you're everywhere. And it's always a delight to see you, so thank you for your active engagement.
You are a great example and we truly appreciate you.
I'm hoping you come up and say something. And when we open public, we'll see if he comes up. And yeah, and just the last thing, we just got back from Colorado and a very educational trip to see what it looks like. See what a rail testing facility looks like, it is one piece of the project. But the easiest way I think I can explain it is, you know, we have, as everyone knows, we have Plant Forty-two. So this would be essentially another Plant Forty-two right next to it, but dedicated to bus and rail. The creation, manufacturing of buses and rail cars in addition to testing. And it's significant because if you just look at the bus component alone, Metro has the third-largest fleet of buses in North America, and they have about two thousand buses that need to be rehabilitated or converted over to electric, and they're gonna need a place to do that. And they have a goal by twenty thirty-four to meet that, so even if they're redoing a hundred buses a day, that still doesn't meet the goal. And that's just one agency that needs to get their fleet turned over. So you look, you start breaking it down, you look at the kind of numbers that will go through the place and the kind of jobs it's gonna create, it's, it's hard to even calculate it. I don't even think it works on the, on the calculator, you start doing the numbers and it just gives you a bunch of letters. But great trip, very informative, lots of stuff going on in the city of Palmdale. It's great to have partners like, like L.A. County and Metro to help us move the city forward with these huge opportunities. Because it's hard for us, as one small city, to pick up the whole bag and take care of these monster projects. But we have good community partners out there and I'm, I'm grateful for them.
Can I say one more thing, sorry, because I just want to keep getting this picture in people's minds, because I don't think they understand it. With California High Speed Rail stopping in Palmdale, connecting us to Los Angeles and Burbank and further north. With Bright Line going from Rancho Cucamonga to Victorville to Vegas, the High Desert Corridor connecting those two lines, we're gonna be at the center of a transportation revolution. But the opportunity that's gonna bring with this center next to Plant Forty-two, we will be in the manufacturing space of airplanes, trains, buses, just the whole bag. The transportation revolution for Palmdale is gonna be amazing, but what Palmdale is gonna do for the transportation revolution for the rest of this country, built here in the United States, built here in Palmdale, I think amazing things are gonna happen. Despite what you read online from disgruntled former mayors.
There we go, always gotta end it on a laugh. All right, so with that, I think it takes us to our city manager's report.
Starting tomorrow at Palmdale Playhouse, we'll have an art exhibit titled Princess in Mosaic Dreams. Also at the Playhouse this weekend, starting on Friday through Sunday, we'll have classical rock video game music where you can hear your favorite Mr. and Mrs. Pac-Man, probably some Super Mario Brothers. I would assume they play something like that, so I'm just guessing on the music, but it's video, video game music live. Also on that Saturday at Marie Kerr Recreation Center, the city along with Waste Management will be hosting a S B thirteen eighty-three, which is an organics workshop. All attendees will receive a pail, but the very best thing is that we'll be giving away a four-pack to one attendee possibly for all-season access pass to Drytown, so that's pretty exciting there. Hopefully, we get, we get a big turnout out there. On the same day, on Saturday, April sixth, at Young Dog Park, we'll have a Disco Dog Day. That should be nice, on Wednesday, April tenth, we'll have a public safety forum at Legacy Commons. On Saturday, April thirteenth, at the Playhouse, we'll have Fentanyl Awareness Symposium. And with that, Fentanyl, our Fentanyl Awareness Campaign update, we have thirty-five additional staff members who receive Narcan and hands-on-only CPR training in March. Also, we had forty middle and high school students participating in Fentanyl Spring Program, which is a three-day workshop during spring break. The campaign had a booth at Caesar Chavez Event on March twenty-third, where they distribute Narcan and resource material on substance prevention and treatment. Also, submissions for the Fentanyl Youth Multimedia Challenge are due by April eighth. Winners will be announced at the Fentanyl Awareness Symposium. Also, we have upcoming Palmdale's Annual Walk of Words Poetry Contest. The theme for this contest is diversity, so look at our website on how to register and how to submit your poem. Oh, and finally, the most exciting news, as part of the Feral spending package adopted by President Biden on March twenty-third, the city was appropriated over one point three million dollars through Congressman Garcia's office for the city to plan and design and construct a new emergency E O C.
All right, congratulations, city of Palmdale. Another win.
Do you remember when we met with him? You and I met, you were mayor at, at the point, at that point, you and I met with Congressman Garcia and we made that request of him and he delivered, so thank you to Congressman.
He's been very good to us, we have another request in, so hopefully that goes all the same. Okay, so now it's gonna take us to item number, actually, we're gonna move over to item number eleven, non-agenda public comments. Madam Clerk?
We have George Ventura.
Hey, George.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I just want to comment, say thank you, guys, thank you for the support, you know, the partnership that the city has with the Ventura Foundation. It's a very healthy relationship that we have with, with the city. We had the Caesar Chavez Day on March twenty-third, despite the rain, it was a very well-attended, very good event. You know, we got an opportunity to meet the legendary Caesar Chavez's grandson, he looks just like his grandfather, you know. The community liked it, he was out there taking photos and everything, so I just want to say thank you for the support, you know, and the, the great relations that we have with Parks and Recs and the staff. Our next event coming up is the Low My Ride Car Show, it's for the Sheriff's Department. This event is always well-attended by thousands of people, we were doing it at the Palmdale Auto Mall. No, right after COVID, we had about eighteen thousand people that came to that event, then we had about ten thousand the next year. It was very hot, a hundred and five degrees. So this year, we're doing it on April twenty-seventh, and we're moving it to Drytown at the water park, okay? And I just want to invite you guys and encourage you guys to come and participate and support our law enforcement. You know, it's a, it's a great event, it's a hundred percent fundraiser for the Sheriff's Department, okay? And then mark your calendars for June eighth, it's our Antelope Valley Taco Festival. And it's gonna be better than last year, it was, last year was great, this one's gonna be better, we have the Sonora de la Mita coming, we have some bands, some live music. We have Lucha Libre, female Lucha Libre, little people Lucha Libre, so it's gonna be a great event, so thank you, guys, thank you for the support.
Thank you, George. All right, next speaker.
We have Eugene Hernandez.
I was reviewing the tape from the last meeting and I was, I wanted to comment that one of your city staff made, made it possible for a millionaire in this city, in the Auto Mall, to receive half a million dollars. And yet, we're only gonna get less than half, that proportionally, that we might get that. So I'm just gonna say that if we continue to find millionaires and give them half a million dollar, this city is gonna go broke, because that, that's not a fair deal. And I'd also like to say that I, I'm really disappointed with the city library here. Like, no one really mentioned the birthdate of Caesar Chavez, March thirty-first. And there's no books in the city library in front that, that display Caesar Chavez, the farm worker movement, or nothing like that, it's always about Black History Month, Black Heroes. And it's, it's totally ignorant of the fact that we're sixty-three percent Latino population. But if you go to the library, you find no books that would reflect our history, our heroes, or anything else. So I think it's a very severe deficiency for the Palmdale Library.
Next speaker.
Irvine Ayala.
As Mr. Ayala comes up, I just want to say, Mr. Hernandez, I, I did not, I was not aware that the
As Mr. Ayala comes up, I just wanna say, Mr. Hernandez, I, I, I did not, I was not aware that the library doesn't highlight, um, um, historical books on, uh, the legacy of Caesar Chavez. Uh, but I can guarantee you that I will look into that and work with the city manager on that moving forward for Hispanic Heritage Month. Uh, ideally, we can, um, have, have a month-long display, uh, in September, absolutely.
Is that, uh?
Anna Verdi appraisal? Anna Verdi appraisal? That's what it states on here?
Anna Verdi. Oh, I don't think he's here. Maybe he's not outside.
Jimmy?
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Whoa, don't I like this mic? Um.
You done.
So, thank you. Uh, my name is Jimmy Gavira. I am the program manager for the Veteran Peer Access Network, which everyone knows it as VPAN. Uh, we are actually located in your city on Thirtieth Street East and Palmdale Boulevard. Um, why I'm here pretty much is that we're talking about a lot of different challenges that we're having in the veteran community and things like that. But I'm not here for, to provide the challenges, but more like solutions of what we do. As a program, we have been partnering with a lot of different organizations and things like that. Uh, one of the challenges that we run into is partnering with the cities as a VPAN program. Uh, most of our funding is coming from, actually, all our funding is from the Department of Mental Health from LA County. And since we cover everything in Catherine Barger's district, we try to do everything we can to provide advocacy and support. Um, there's a lot of things that are going on that I'm noticing that we're very short on when it comes to veteran, uh, um, advocacy and when it comes to a lot of different challenges that we run into. I know you mentioned another thing that was very important, which actually would affect a lot of veterans across the board. You talk about the Technology Center and everything that's coming through to town. It's great, but the problem that I'm noticing, and I'm noticing across both, both cities, is we have a major brain drain. When I say that, it's more like all our, all our veterans and anybody that's like, wants to get highly educated and everything, you're gonna need engineers, if you're gonna have a technology, you're gonna need STEM, STEM, STEM across the board. We don't have that in the Anlo Valley. We don't have a UC, we don't have a CSU. We have none of that when it comes to education. Veterans, they'd rather stay in place, especially that this is one of the biggest, like, cities and areas where there's a lot of veterans who that wanna be, so they wanna stay here, wanna, they, they feel comfortable. Obviously, you saw the big turnout when it comes to the, the Vietnam, um, what do you call it, Memorial, right? Well, what I'm trying to say more than anything else is a lot of these veterans are coming in with a lot of support already, I hand, but I'm looking at also, I wanna look at their business, why, why not spend their GI Bill here than, than giving it to CSUN and Northridge? Or giving it to UCLA, or giving it to USC, or giving it to all these other schools when that money could stay here? I'm just looking at it from that perspective, but again, I know I'm out of time, but I just wanted to say, you know, that's something that I'm very passionate about, especially when it comes to education, or else I wouldn't be sitting here right now where I'm at today. So, thank you.
Mayor, may I make a response?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I just wanted to say, I, I taught at AV College for twenty-one years, taught hundreds of veterans. Um, you can use your GI Bill there. We have a veteran liaison that works with the college to help veterans maneuver through the educational system. And I have pushed since two thousand nine to get a four-year university brick and mortar here, um, to our city and maybe one day before I expire, we'll get that to actually happen, so, yeah.
Can I piggyback off that then, real quick? Um, Senator Scott Wilk, now, um, co-sponsored by Assemblymember Juan Carrillo and I think Tom Lackey, uh, are introducing legislation to do the feasibility study and the exploration of a four-year university in the Anlo Valley. But in the meantime, Councilmember Bettencourt is absolutely right. The Anlo Valley College is a great path. There is a program where basically all of the super tenants, whether it's the college, the high schools, we're trying to coordinate them to be on the same page about, um, CTE, Technical Education. And I think what we need to do is incorporate the veterans into that, but most importantly, incorporate the unions into that because that's the path that we're putting on. So if you email me, I will, um, respond to you with what I know exists and definitely listen to you about your ideas on how to improve.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker.
We have Maricela. Vicky Ventura.
She's hiding back there. Hey, Vicky.
Hi, good evening. Bishop, Mayor Bishop. I always like to say that. I know, see where you started, Richard? But, Richard, I wanted to thank you. I, I got the opportunity to attend the Anlo Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce luncheon and I gotta say, you represented the city very well and I was very impressed with the information that you provided to all the attendees there, including myself. So, you know, in a collaboration to bring all the chambers together, we're trying to support each other and attend each other's events. Um, but I was very impressed, so I just wanted to say thank you for that. I appreciate that. And also, I wanna thank all of you and staff who approved the Trader Joe's Center that's being built. I get the pleasure to see it every single day. So when I go home at night, I go, oh, that's okay, they did that today. And the morning, I go, wait a minute, that wasn't there last night. So, thank you for that and the future looks very bright, uh, for Palmdale, just, just with that, right? So we're very excited, we're very excited to do the, hopefully to do the ribbon cutting for that site there, right? Uh, we're gonna make it spectacular. I don't know if it could beat me, Rantito, but we'll try it, right? Um, and also, Ms. Andrea Alarcon, I look forward to seeing you at the Town City Hall. I really do wanna talk to you about, you know, how we get some funding for the small business community. Um, Eric, I know we kinda touch bases, but I think if we get everybody, you know, to really put some money aside for the small business community, I think that we could help a lot of business through the Anlo Valley Chamber of Commerce. So I just wanna say thank you and I look forward to collaborating, working with all of you. Thank you for all you're doing, we appreciate you.
Thank you, Vicky. All right.
Do you have no more speaker cards on this item?
Oh, I know there's somebody else. I know Marcia, I know Marcia's gonna say something. Marcia likes to go last.
I think, uh, then you're all, um, in possession of the email that I sent you last night, uh, expressing some concerns, uh, by, uh, members of the Latino community, representatives of Latino organizations as it relates to the Human Rights Committee. You know, from inception, uh, when I was first proposed, I wrote a letter to the editor stating, uh, uh, my incredulity, uh, I did believe that the city council people who proposed that concept was, uh, really wanting, uh, a Human Rights Committee or wanting it to be successful. Uh, so far, four years later, uh, everything we've seen proves our point, our original point. Uh, nothing that we've asked for, not a single proposal, not a single request, has been granted us yet. And all we've gotten now in the past two months is, um, three months, is, um, cancellations of our meetings. So we're here to be straight up with you guys, want you to be straight up with us too. Let's stop the charade. If, if you really are not interested in the Human Rights Committee or what it could do, because we have the ability, we really, we really have hope and faith, faith that it could be really, really successful, they could do a whole bunch of stuff and, and, and the fact that you, uh, you know, instituted it, give us some hope that perhaps you are genuine and wanting to accomplish something. So here it is. If you're genuine, direct staff, and I mean, Ronda Perez, to give us the support that we need, we've asked you to allow us to meet on a monthly basis. And we told you, we're ready to defer, uh, compensation, don't pay us. Keep the money, if, if that's, you know, the problem, keep it. But we wanna do something and so far, everything we proposed, not a single response. Not one response. So stop the charade, um, support us or dissolve it. Be genuine, dissolve it if you guys really don't want it. You know, you said, uh, at a meeting where somebody proposed that it get dissolved, you were nodding your head and I agree, Ben, well, do it! You know, let's stop wasting our time and stop dashing our hopes.
All right, thank you. All right, next speaker. All right, that's it, Marcia, you're done.
And after Marcia, it's gonna be, uh, Marcos Alvarez.
I'm not the last person.
All right.
Uh, recently, like most, uh, should be, everyone in Palmdale, we got our Palmdale Magazine, of which I, uh, go through every single page and was so happy to see in the little bottom corner that we would be celebrating the Fourth of July on the Fourth of July at the Amphitheater with fireworks, which I must say, for the last couple of years, in an odd day, um, especially, I think it was last year, those kind of low fire, oh, the drones! Oh, the, yeah, that was pretty awesome. Anyway, we have been celebrating, but not on the Fourth of July. So I am really looking forward to that happening and wondering, are we, do we give money to Lancaster for the fireworks display they have on the Fourth of July that is for all of the whole entire valley? Um, do we still give them money? Just a question. BJ's Corner is up for sale and you know what? It's less money than you gave to the Auto Mall. One point five million, you gave two million to the Auto Mall for some incentives. Well, I think that would be a great community, um, project to, first of all, just buy it. And then we can work down the, through the years to develop and how, you know, we want to best show our commitment to aerospace, which we talk about all the time. You know, how we, Palmdale, Palmdale only, built the planes. The other communities supported us, of course, but Palmdale built the planes. And if we buy BJ's, it should belong to Palmdale. Thank you.
Thanks, Marcia. And I just wanted to say, I posted an, an older video of the Palmdale anniversary, which you're in it, and I wanted to say, I like what you had to say and thank you for your years of engagement.
And I just wanna say, I already sent an email to the city manager expressing my support for the city to buy BJ's Corner cuz I agree with you one hundred percent. There's a great asset there. Um, right now, we leased the land where Joe Davy's Air Park is. Maybe we can own this, move that all over, show our history and our pride on a street that gets the most traffic in the city. I think that's a brilliant idea. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Olson, they've just doubled the price.
And, and no, we did not give them any money for Fourth of July. All right. Next speaker.
Marcos Alvarez.
Good evening, consul, mayor. Mr. Loa, Mr. Bettencourt, Ms. Alarcon, Mr. Olson. And as soon as he's off the phone, uh, Mr. Curry. Having said that, I wanna remind people what the Human Rights Advisory Committee was created for as Mr., uh, Javier Flores reiterated. It provides advice, actionable recommendations to you, the mayor, the city consul and city manager in the efforts to build and maintain an inclusive community by cultivating awareness, increasing diversity, encouraging sensitivity and promoting equity and improving relations. Which, by the way, I think in the totality, uh, two years from today, we're a lot closer today than what I just described, so thank you for that. Uh, but I wanna just say, uh, and thank Ms., uh, uh, Ms. Nardi Lopez and Ms. Rochelle Scott for attempting to explain to me, uh, in the last few days, why it keeps getting canceled. What I learned was that since October, uh, minutes have not been approved. And they concluded by saying there are no items as the reasons of why we're not continuing with the means and why they continue to be canceled, right? I can do better than that, give me a better explanation, right? We know Ms. Wafi, if it was her name was, she's no longer here, but that's been a minute now. That in itself should not be a reason to delay a future Human Rights Committee meeting cuz it's not about me, it's about the issues of the community according to this language that collectively we were gonna address to improve the community. So I hope, uh, we can collaborate sooner than later to find ways of how we can improve this committee and making sure that we can sit down and talk about the subject matters that need to be addressed, uh, sooner than later. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Marcos.
So, yeah, I just wanna follow up on the remarks with regards to the Human Rights Commission, but I think, um, they apply to all of our commissions. Um, I'm disheartened to hear that two Human Rights Committee meetings have been canceled, uh, as of late. But I'm also, um, disappointed to, to, to know that Measure AV Committee, we've got a member here. They took, mm, you know, a lot of, of, of time and effort. They created subcommittees and they drafted two memoranda, um, to present to the city council. Uh, those were directed to be brought to the city council many, many months ago. I asked, um, in, in public forum at this dais, when they're coming back, um, didn't really get a response. I, in, in the substance of what, I actually had the, the opportunity to go to the Measure AV Committee meetings and the Human Rights Committee meetings and the Arts, uh, 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 committee meetings. And the substance really, uh, overall is, what is their role? It, or do they really have a substantive role? Are, are we listening to them? We've created them and they take action and they draft memoranda and they ask that they be sent to council for consideration. But then they, they, they sit and they, they, they are never acted on and in, in the Human Rights Committees, uh, instance, the, the, the committee meetings are just outright canceled. Uh, there are action items on the table that they would like to consider. Uh, and if, if, if we really believe in, in the purpose of all of the committees, including the Measure AV Committee, which was presented to the voters as an opportunity to create transparency and give them some, some substantive oversight, we really owe it to them. I mean, they, they're, they're putting a lot of time and the, and, and giving of themselves, uh, to be actively engaged in each of these committees. I didn't even have, you guys denied me the opportunity to appoint, uh, to the Measure AV Committee, but I believe that those memorandas should come to this council for consideration because there is valuable feedback from them in that and I think that we need to, we need to review those. Uh, so I would ask that our city manager bring both, all of the items that the Measure AV Committee, um, uh, prepared, I mean, those were actually supposed to be considered before, by the council before the budget cycle because they had recommendations on, um, the budget schedule and, and, um, you know, public hearings and whatnot. Um, but we need to bring those to, to, to the council sooner rather than later and I would encourage, uh, that we really, you know, support and give value and, and, and bring light to the Human Rights Committee as well and, and all of our other commissions and let them do the work that they are, they are really, really invested in because they really can, can provide some valuable input and feedback that we just, we can't do everything and that's why we appointed them and yet we're denying them the opportunity to have a substantive, uh, role in the process. So I would just ask that the city, um, manager work directly with all of the commissions to, to bring back, um, the items that were specifically directed to be, uh, reviewed by the city council and also reinstate the Human Rights Committee meetings.
All right, do we have any other public comment?
No further public comments.
All righty. So with that, we're gonna move on to presentations by the city attorney.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council and public. We have an item twelve, three properly agendized items that are all dealing with existing litigation. Uh, twelve-one has to do with, uh, Leona Valley Town Council. Good news there, the city prevailed entirely and will be advising the council on next steps. Twelve-point-two, uh, is a matter that is currently in negotiation. And twelve-point-three, um, presents an opportunity to maybe work more closely with a local entity, AVEC. But, uh, we will be discussing all of those in closed session and at your convenience, we can adjourn to closed session.
Okay. So at this time, we're gonna go into closed session. We'll be back shortly. You wanna wait? Great, if not, we'll see you next time. All right, and we're back. Announcement by city attorney, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and public. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and public. Uh, item, uh, CS one, or item one on the, uh, the agenda, twelve-one. The council unanimously gave authority to accept the terms of the settlement with the Leona Valley Town Council. Uh, in that one, the, the city won unconditionally one hundred percent. Uh, it couldn't be a, a better win, so that's great for the city. On item, the second item, twelve point two, the city council unanimously directed further negotiation. Uh, there was an offer that was not accepted and there will be further negotiation between. Outside council and, uh, LDA. On item three, the, uh, AVEC water case. Um, city council unanimously directed that the settlement be put into place on the terms described. Which will be memorialized and made available as soon as possible. And with that, Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Okay, well, that is gonna bring us to the adjournment. Our next meeting is gonna be April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, right here at five P M at the council chambers. Thank you, everyone have a good night and get home safe.